Okay.
I don't want to do what I just did because, well, I could, I guess, huh? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Merkin.
Here.
Councilmember Ballinger.
Here.
Councilmember DeGero.
Here.
Mayor Protem Alves.
Here.
And Mayor Swift.
Here. And we'll be proceeding to the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual, councilmember, or member of the public for special consideration. For example, I will be, regarding item number two, I'll be abstaining from voting on check numbers nine, seven, four, six, and seven, four, three, one, one. Tammy, I have a quick question. Are we online with the go-to meeting?
Mark, can you still not hear anything? Can anybody hear us on the go-to meeting? Technology.
The reason I'm asking this question.
Yeah, I have somebody who's in the chat here.
And the reason I'm asking that question at this point, just in case there is any member of the audience who would like to pull in any item from the consent calendar for consideration.
Can anybody hear us on go-to meeting?
What's going on?
That's what we're trying to find out. Can you hear us? Okay.
Can members of the public who are looking, listening at the go-to meeting, can they also call in? Does that function work right now?
Well, it's on the same.
Same wavelength, okay.
Can anybody hear us now?
Tammy, if you can hear me, this is Mark Velazquez. We haven't been able to hear council that, that well. Can you check the mics, please?
Can you hear us now?
No, that's the first I heard.
Okay.
We have feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You do.
Sorry, I'm struggling.
And we have a loud echo, which means we have several people with their mics on that need to be turned off. Overrun twice.
I think it's here in the chambers.
It might be the cell phones that cause that.
No, I think it's, I'm having an issue with our AV here. And that's what's causing it. Can you hear us? Okay, is there?
That sounds good. That's much better.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we're good.
And, Mark, can you hear me? This is Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. I can hear you now.
Very good. So, again, we will continue with the consent calendar. We do need a motion for approval if there are no objections to poll, or if nobody would like to poll any items. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar in its entirety. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And all those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Consent calendar passes in its entirety, five to zero. Staff communications.
I just wanted to let the council know that councilmember Peter Kremick has reached back out to me, and he will be here for our November 16th meeting. He did say he's been watching the meetings online, trying to keep up with what transactions or what decisions have been made while he's out, so I just wanted to let you know that. So, councilmember Ballinger will not be on the dais at the next meeting for the 16th, but then when it comes to December 2nd, then we'll swear him in as official councilmember. And then I wanted to just let everybody know that our Farinelli Parkway landscape contract is gonna be going out for proposals. So, we did have, that contract is going to be ending at the end of the year, so we will be going out for proposals on that.
Who has it currently?
Swift Lawn and Garden.
And they don't, they're gonna no longer have it? They're giving it up?
Correct. Yes, they've asked, they've asked to be released from their contract. And we've had an inquiry from our local Cub Scouts who have asked to be able to do, present the flag salute at our meeting of November 16th. So, they have 12 Cub Scouts, so we may just have to allow the Cub Scouts in here, and if we have too much audience, and, but we will ask them if, we'll have them here on the 16th, as long as there's no objections.
No objections? Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think it's very doable, yeah.
So, and then, just a reminder, of course, everyone knows tomorrow's Election Day, so our community center has been open since Saturday, allowing people to drop off their ballots. And then tomorrow, we will also have a drive-up ballot drop, drop-off here in our City Hall parking lot. So, they have the community center, they'll have City Hall, and then they will also have, there is a drop-off, ballot drop-off at Strand Ace Hardware. And that's all I have. I don't know.
I'm chief.
No, the Cub Scouts reached out to me. They would like to meet with officers for a tour of the PD. I'll be contacting Mr. Strowman, probably tomorrow.
Fantastic.
Figure something out.
Great idea.
Very good, very good. Okay, nothing else under staff communications, we will be moving on to matters presented from the audience. And of course, at this time, the public may address the city council on any item, not on the agenda that is within the authority of the council. And the speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. And I know we have members of the community listening in on the go-to meeting, as well as on the phone, so let me start with anybody from the audience that would like to speak. How about on the go-to meeting? And how about on the phone? We'll see none. Let's proceed to administrative ma, administrative matters, item number five. Tammy, is this you?
It is. So, Mayor and council, tonight, we are asking you to review and accept the response to the follow-up report for the 2017-18 San Joaquin County General, or San Joaquin County Civil Grand Jury Case Number 0119. The 2019-20 San Joaquin County Grand Jury has published Case Number 0119, Homeless in San Joaquin County Building Up on Foundation, Collaboration, and Communication. Copies of the reports were provided to both the city council and staff. The city of Escalon does not have a continual population of homeless persons living within the community. The city will experience an occasional homeless person, typically as they are traveling from city to city within the county or surrounding areas. During the 2019 Time and Place Study conducted, it was noted that Escalon had four homeless individuals. Over the years, when our law enforcement has encountered the homeless, they have made efforts to assist, including contacting a local church to assist with a possible hotel or mill voucher. In 2018, the city did implement a bus voucher to assist those who wanted to obtain services in another city. The bus vouchers are for a round trip, and since implementation, three passes have been issued. So, the first finding is although many residents are interested in how homeless is being managed, only the city of Lodi has published accomplishments in plain language on its website. This lack of readily available information make it difficult for residents to understand what is being done to address homelessness. So, we basically, they're asking us to post something on our website. So, the draft response is, "City of Escalon acknowledges findings F3.1 and recognizes the need for Escalon residents to have ready access to useful and understandable information concerning homelessness and the responsive measures of their city. This information should focus on the direct, tangible, and effective steps taken by the Escalon Police Department and city government as a whole." Recommendation, by December 30th of 2020, the cities of Stockton, Tracy, Manteca, Lathrip, Ripon, and Escalon post plain language information on their website that outlines the actions each city has taken to address homelessness. In response to recommendation R3.1, the city will post the information referenced above on its website and make updates as warranted. Recommendation, R3.2, by December 30th of 2020, the cities of Tracy, Manteca, Lathrip, Ripon, and Escalon adopt the San Joaquin Continuum of Care as their primary organization through which the county and cities work together to develop solutions to homeless. And R3.3, by December 30th of 2020, the cities of Tracy, Manteca, Lathrip, Ripon, and Escalon in open forum officially acknowledge and support the program administrator for the homeless initiatives position as a homeless coordinator for San Joaquin County.
Who is the administrator for the county?
It is Andrew Chesley.
Yeah.
Andrew Chesley?
Yeah.
He's the, he's the cost director.
Yeah, I know he is, yeah.
Not Andrew Chesley. It's, it isn't Andrew, but it's a different last name.
Okay.
For continuum care.
And by agreeing to this, are we liable for any things they do?
So, so our response right now is that in response to those two recommendations, the city will place a resolution on a city council agenda by December 30th, 2020, for consideration by the council. The resolution will propose that the city of Escalon adopt the San Joaquin Continuum of Care as a primary organization through which the county and cities work together to develop solutions of homelessness, and officially acknowledge and support the program administrator for homeless initiatives position as the homeless coordinator of San Joaquin County. So, right now, we're not considering that resolution. We're only saying that we're gonna put it on the agenda by the end of the year for you guys to consider. So, I'll review the resolution and confirm that there's no obligation. I would anticipate there's gonna be some kind of, that the.
Financial commitment?
That's my concern about it, yes.
I have mine, too.
Yes. Adam Ches, Cheshire. Thank you. I knew it was close, 'cause I always look at them and think the names are, yeah, so.
How's his last name? He's appointed, is that how that works? How's he get that position?
I'm not positive how he was appointed, or how he obtained that position. 'Cause it's through the county, so I don't know if the county board appointed him, or the county administrator hired him. I'm not positive.
That'd be interesting what authority he has, and if we sign this deal, what is it we're obligated?
Right, and I think that's what the resolution will detail when we bring it back to you guys.
So, is this necessarily obligating us to agree with whatever that resolution will be when we do see it?
It's not. It's basically saying that we will consider it.
Consider it, okay. At this point, just consider it, okay. All right, okay, that's our, if, yeah, we had some objections.
If we chose not to. I mean, it, it, it's, they're recommending that we do, but you don't, I mean, if the council's not comfortable with it, you don't have to.
Right, okay. So, you're asking for a discussion and direction.
Correct.
Is there any discussion at this point? I think it sounds like basically the only thing that we might be doing is acknowledging that, or giving a consensus that, that the path you want to go on is the path we want to go on.
Yeah, my recommend, the draft recommendations for response.
Any objection to that as a path we're going on at the moment?
No, as long as you sign nothing.
Okay. All right, so I guess we'll be looking forward to seeing that resolution.
Okay.
So, and see what, see what it says.
So, we probably should take action on that with a motion and a.
I'd move to accept the response.
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to accept the response to the San Joaquin County Grand Jury regarding homelessness. Is there any discussion of the motion on the table? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please see, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes five to zero. Item number six.
All right, so tonight, before the council, staff is asking you to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution revising solid waste fees with an effective date of December 15th. The city received a letter from Jolton Solid Waste on August 14th, 2020, requesting an increase to current fees of 1.1%. The letter and proposed rate schedule are attached to the staff report. This request is being made according to language found within our current agreement that does allow for an annual CPI increase of not to exceed 2.5%. The last adjustment for solid waste services was last increased on August 15th, 2017. Since the previous adjustment, Jolton's letters indicated experience, they have experienced an increase in tipping fees at the waste energy facility, purchasing additional equipment to help meet state mandates, and an increase in insurance costs across the board. So, they are asking the city to make the appropriate rate adjustment based on the annual CPI of 1.1%. From the last, and from, Jolton provided additional information that from the last rate increase in 2017, we've realized a 4.22% increase in the tipping fee at the Waste Transfer, or, it's W2E, it's the transfer.
Waste Energy Facility.
It is Waste Energy Facility, okay, thank you. So, this is the cost to dispose of the garbage collected within the city. Over the past two years, Jolton Solid Waste has had to increase the size of their fleet and increase their inventory of bins and carts to provide additional service to the qualifying businesses and multifamily units of five or more in order to meet the mandates of both AB 341 mandatory commercial recycling and AB 1826 mandatory organics recycling. Of course, with the additional service comes additional costs for truck maintenance, fuel, and increase in wages, insurance, and other disposal costs such as a tipping fee at compost facilities for green waste, organic disposals. The rate increase for liability insurance, which includes a vehicle policy, a general liability policy, and an umbrella policy were huge. From 2017 to 2020, they've experienced a rate increase of 322%. The increase in wages, medical and dental insurance, or workers' comp, were not researched, which of course have all increased during the same timeframe. So, at the meeting of September 21st, staff asked the council for direction on how they would like to move forward with the increase. The city council inquired what the increase would mean to the residents and businesses. Utilizing the proposed rate sheet, staff has calculated that residents would experience an annual increase of $2.70, 76 cents, and businesses would range from an increase of 15.48 to 30.36, depending upon the bin side annually. Staff put together a worksheet that shows the monthly increases for the, for each rate, for your review also. Staff is recommending, after holding a public hearing, the council consider adopting the attached resolution of the city council revising solid waste fees with an effective date of December 15th. And we do have representatives from Jolton here, if you guys have any questions.
Okay.
Let's go back to the commercial rate, 15 to 48. What they, what they mean to say there is there's rates, they're at 15.48 and as, and as high as 30.
No, no, it depends upon what, what size bin or what the, the commercial business is. It could range in that area.
What is it currently?
It ranges, I don't know what the, uh, let's see if I have something in my, where I calculated those out.
By the way, if there is an opportunity that, and I do, I apologize, I didn't get your names, please. Denise, Denise, Denise and Savannah, if there are any questions that you guys are in a good position to answer, please feel free to come up to the podium, okay?
So, I just have, I didn't write down what the estimated for commercial is, but it would, was coming out to like two, up to $2.53 and a $1.29.
$2.53?
So, let's see.
$1.29. So, that's it?
That would be like, I'm looking at the bins.
These are bins, okay.
Page 120, if you're back it there, I believe. If you're looking for rates on bins or containers, I think that's what we got. Is that what we're looking for right there?
Yeah. So, there on the screen, yeah. It shows what the, the bins, change in cost there. So, there's a lot of variety, or variances there, variations because of, it could depend upon how often they pick it up.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a feel for what kind of an impact it's gonna have on any one person or business.
Right.
And trying to figure out what the big swing is, if there's a swing, how much. Would you say the swing's under $2 or $3 in each one of them?
Yeah, well, that's what the average was, was somewhere in the range of $15 to $30 a year. It could be an impact on a business.
Okay, so that's a yearly quote.
That's a yearly, yes.
$15.48 or the $1.29 a month.
Okay. And but it was 15 to 30, yeah, okay, I got it. Good enough. All right.
If there aren't any additional opening questions, we're gonna open up the public hearing, and let's go ahead and do so at this time. And don't forget, if you're attending via the go-to meeting, or if you're on your phone, please chime in, and we'll get your question or comment.
I have one more question. With regards to the seniors, what is the age for the seniors?
It's 65.
65 and over?
Yes.
Okay, seniors. And then, what reduction do they receive for that age?
It's a $2 discount.
Is that off the current rate or the new rate coming?
Off of whatever a residential rate, it's $2 reduced.
$2.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is there any comment or any questions? Again, we're still in the public hearing, so anybody from the audience and here, or on the go-to meeting, or on the phone? This is your opportunity to ask a question either to Tammy, or Savannah, or Denise, or comment. Going once, going twice. Let's close the public meeting and bring it back to council for action.
I would move to adopt the resolution revising the solid waste fees with Jolton Solid Waste Incorporated to be effective December 15th, 2020, and that's a 1.1% increase across the board, right?
Correct.
I make that motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution revising the solid waste fees with Jolton, Gilton or Jolton? Jolton. Solid Waste Incorporated to be effective December 15th, 2020. Is there any discussion of the motion on the table?
And this is Mark Velazquez, to be specific, it's Resolution XX dash 20.
Okay, XX dash 20, for the record. Voice felt so silly just saying double X, triple X. But, Mark, you are correct in that, so. Is there any discussion of the motion on the table? Seeing now, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes five to zero. And, Mark, I really do appreciate your clarification. Thank you very much. Item number seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Savannah, Denise, thank you for attending tonight. Item number seven.
Right, Mayor and council, tonight, we are, our staff is asking you to adopt a resolution XX dash 20, making findings on facility financing for an energy conservation project required under California Government Code Section 4217 dot 10, and authorizing an equipment lease purchase agreement. So, this is in reference to the energy projects that we approved at our last, or at the October 5th meeting. This is the financing for it, as indicated, it's through Sterling, as indicated at that meeting. It is through Sterling National Bank at 2.55% for a financing term of 20 years. The refinance, or the financing repayment will align with the anticipated energy savings. The city will enter into an equipment lease purchase agreement and seek reimbursement through the funds as payments are made on the equipment and improvements. The equipment lease will be secured by the projects being financed. The total amount of equipment is $5,746,712. The city will contribute $320,700 towards the cost. These contributions come from, $300,000 from the water fund for monies collected for meter replacements. There's also $20,700 in special recreation funds for the stadium lights. Staff recommends the council approve the proposed resolution authorizing making findings on facility financing for the energy conservation project required under California Government Code Section 4217, and authorizing an equipment lease purchase agreement.
Okay, and again, this is all, also a public hearing, but before I begin the public here, hearing, I will ask if there are any opening questions or comments from council. Seeing none, I'd like to declare the public meeting open. And I'm seeking any questions or comments from the audience, or from the go-to meeting, or from the phone.
I have a question.
Yes. Yeah, Kurt?
Go ahead, Kurt.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Yeah, I, I can't hear you, but I'll, uh, I'm assuming you can hear me. Uh, Mark, can you, uh, shake your head if you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. I had a couple of questions. One was the, uh, water meters replacement, which is obviously a good idea. How much money are we gonna be saving by doing this replacement? And, and is that a savings over twenty years or thirty years? Uh, which would recruit the money into the water fund? Uh, that would be one question there. As far as LED lights, things go, uh, I'm always in favor of that, uh, I think you all know that, but, uh, I'm concerned that this, this whole energy, uh, project here and financing has come in front of the treatment plant. And I'm just, I'm curious to know if we can get the same kind of financing for whatever the council's decision will be on the upgrades to the treatment plant.
Okay.
Uh, are we still on track? Is that a serious, uh, consideration from the council? And, uh, I'm gonna turn my phone off, hopefully I can hear your response. Thank you.
Okay.
Tammy?
Yes, so I'm looking, trying to find the cash flow regarding the, um, the meters.
We saved the labor of the guys reading them.
Yeah, they, they had the, he was referencing...
I would say it was like twenty-something thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
It's like it was two, a little over two thousand a month when I looked, when we looked at the breakdown before we approved it. Probably between two and twenty-five hundred bucks. Something around there a month. Have to pull a packet from three meetings ago to find it.
And Tammy, while we were looking...
So, I know, I know it was estimated right around twenty thousand dollars a year, and that was for the first twenty years, and then you still had additional savings, um, which they estimated the life to be twenty-five to thirty years, so they actually, their cash flow had it all the way out to thirty years in savings. So, um, and, go ahead, Kurt.
Hey, hey, I, uh, so, so what you're saying is the amount of monies lost to the city currently are, uh, would be regained by twenty thousand dollars a year on these replacements? And so over twenty years, that would be, what, four hundred thousand, uh, charges you would pay for the, uh, the cost of that replacement? Is, is that what you're saying?
I'm actually saying that after we pay for the financing, um, and we save the money in energy savings, we would still be pocketing twenty thousand dollars a year in the water fund. So that's after making our financing payment.
Okay, but that's the, that's the whole program, not just the, uh, the water meters?
No, I believe that was just the water meters. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that was the water meters. It, it could be slightly different, but there was still a savings every year even with making the finance payment.
So, so just looking at things as they are right now, we're losing how much money a year by not replacing these meters?
Um, the estimated revenue, um, that we could potentially see, they estimated at like a five percent, um, and I wanna say it was right around fifty thousand dollars, forty-five thousand a year.
Wow. Okay, um, and, and I'll wait for the, uh, answer about the treatment plant.
So they are working on the treatment plant, they are currently working on, um, getting a thirty percent design, um, to us, um, after the first of the year, probably within the first quarter sometime around February-ish or March. Um, so that, that project is still moving forward.
Okay.
Will we be able to use the same kind of financing from this current company?
So, so we would, um, once we get to that point when we've approved the project and we're gonna go out, then we would solicit bids for financing as we did with the, with these projects. So no guarantee on, on the cost, on the interest rates.
Okay, but I'll, I'll wait for that period then, thank you.
Alright, Kurt, thank you very much for calling. Uh, is there anybody else who would like to ask a question, make a comment regarding, uh, this subject during the public hearing? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council for action.
I would just say that if everything works out the way staff has laid it out, this is gonna be a very good thing for Escalon. I have my feelings in terms of the interest rates, I think personally I still think they're too high, but what are you gonna do? One question I have for you too, and with regards to the library, how do we recoup cost them like a library when we put all that money into it?
So, um, it's off of the energy savings there also, that is paying for those improvements.
From there, from the energy savings?
Mm-hmm.
So they're gonna have solar panels there as well?
Correct, yeah, they don't need very many, but they will have so, solar panels.
Are we in the process of repairing the roof before we put all that stuff on top of it?
We repaired the roof a couple of years ago.
When you say repair, is that replaced and put a new one, or we just patched?
No, we didn't just patch, we did a new one.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Because it seems crazy to put all that stuff up there on a used roof.
Totally agree.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't do that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good with everything else, and I'd move on to staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number double X twenty?
If I, if I may, this is Mark Velasquez, since the last resolution was double X twenty, uh, Tammy, should this be renumbered, resolution double X twenty-one?
Well, we put the double X there because it's to be filled in when we, when we do the numbering, once they're approved. So that's just a placeholder for the next, uh, resolution number.
Thank you.
They have no significance.
Don't I feel silly? Thank you very much for that clarification.
And twenty represents the year, right?
And correct, yeah, the last two are digits are the year that the resolution is adopted in.
I don't know what to say. It, it's, okay, so, it's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution...
You can say double X.
Double X twenty, regarding the, okay, making findings on facility financing for an energy conservation project required under California Government Code Section four-two-one-seven, uh, decimal one-zero, and, uh, authorizing an equipment lease purchase agreement. Is there any discussion of the motion on the table? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes five to zero. Council Communications, Councilmember Bellinger.
Uh, just to follow up with that resolution we just passed, um, I think it's gonna be really good for the city. I really like the guarantees that NG has put in place for that, so if there's any hiccups that we might have missed or they might have missed, they're on the financial hook for that, so based on the way the contract's written, in my understanding, the risk is very minimal to our city, and it's a plus win for us for the next twenty, thirty years.
Yes.
But that's all I've pretty much got for tonight, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Bellinger. Councilmember Legero.
Uh, yeah, I'm really, uh, excited to see the investment in the infrastructure for the city. I know that it's been a long time coming. We've, uh, done our due diligence to make sure that this is a good way forward, to make sure that we had the guarantees that we needed to, uh, feel comfortable to move forward with this, but I agree, this is gonna be a great project. I'm, uh, looking forward to seeing the wastewater treatment plant get, uh, its needs taken care of, so I'm, I'm happy to see that we're able to, to move forward on these infrastructure projects. And, uh, I voted today, went to the community center, very smooth, no problems at all. Uh, it sounds like they have a good handle on the process, so, uh, we'll see what happens tomorrow, might be bigger crowds, but, uh, so far, it seems to be going very well, so.
Very good.
Vote.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Legero. Councilmember Merkin.
I too am looking forward to this project. I think, uh, it's very nice to be proactive and not reactive to some of these things that are, uh, ailing with our infrastructure, so this'll hopefully put us, if not ahead of the, of the curve, maybe at least at the top of the curve, so we're not, not on the downhill side. Uh, get out and vote, this is very important, the election this year, there are lots of propositions that everybody needs to consider. And, uh, the trunk or treat at the Heritage Church went off fabulous, uh, shows you how desperate people are to get out. We had, we gave away fifteen hundred pounds of candy.
Oh, wow.
And we had, we had, they estimated between fifteen and eighteen hundred people.
Whoa.
I parked at Starbucks and had to walk back.
Wow.
It was that bad.
Goodness.
Congratulations.
It, it was that crowded, I mean, it, it, it was packed.
That's wonderful.
They were having a great time too, so it wa, it was good to see people out and about again.
Good deal.
Fantastic, thank you very much, Councilmember Merkin. Mayor Pro-Tam Alves.
That's encouraging, maybe we can do some for Christmas this year or something. That's very encouraging. Um, overall, I think I'm very satisfied with the city's laid out for our future on this, uh, energy plan we have. If everything comes to fruition, as they say it will, I think we did the right thing, and I think we'll be happy. And, um, another thing I wanna keep on staff's mind, and I want the council to keep in mind too, is senior housing. Gentlemen, we have dodged that thing until I'm sick of it, and we're losing some really great old folks that have to move because of it. It's gonna have to be a priority, gentlemen. We've put this thing on the side too long, so, beginning of next year, my priority will be as mayor, if I am elected mayor through the council, is to push through senior housing for seniors. And so I just wanna give you a heads up, that's gonna be something I'm really work on, I hope you do some research on your own, and come up with some ideas and help staff and myself do something. And that's good for tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor Pro-Tam Alves. And yeah, I just wanna echo what everybody else was saying, uh, regarding, uh, the, uh, the infrastructure investment that we're gonna be making, I think it's gonna help build us for the long run, to keep us as, um, the kinda town that we want Escalon to be, uh, so that we won't be beholden to other entities, uh, to get our infrastructure updated. Uh, we're doing it on our own, and, uh, autonomy and independence means an awful lot, and if we're in a position to do it, which we are, which we took tonight, uh, I think the importance of that cannot be underestimated for, for the future and the future generations of Escalonians. Uh, regarding the voting, uh, yeah, definitely go out and vote. I talked to, uh, Ace the other day, and actually their, uh, drop-off box has been quite busy over the last, what, two, three weeks as well, they've had to empty it several times, and it's been packed, so that's a very good sign as well. Uh, I do wanna give a kudo out to Heritage Church for the trunk or treat. I think that was a similarly fantastic event, and, uh, Escalon needed it, uh, so please...
They changed their name, is that it?
Yeah, from, uh, Covenant. Yeah, to Heritage.
Why did they change the name?
Yeah, okay. Well, whatever, I really, really appreciate what, what the church did. Um, and also, it was also great to see the turnout on Halloween itself.
I had plenty of people.
A lot of people out there, I think this town's just ready to go, you know, with getting back out and trying to do everything they can to make things life, uh, life as normal as possible. Uh, I'll segue that to, uh, the Christmas on Main, I know that they were working, they're working on a, uh, contest, a citywide contest, best decorated house, as well as best decorated business. I know that, uh, we're looking at doing a movie night, I don't know what you wanna announce about that yet, but, uh...
Yeah, so, um, yeah, we're gonna do a movie night on the Friday night, and we're actually, uh, Quality Service Incorporated has agreed to allow us to use their parking lot, so, um, working on getting all the equipment together and putting the movie together.
Yes.
We're actually gonna end up doing, um, Tom McCoy's parking, parking lot.
Oh, you're gonna do it over there, it's downtown?
Yeah, well, the train's downtown and parking and the park may not be ideal during that time of the year.
What's the movie gonna be?
Um, it's to be announced.
I want Jimmy Stewart, come on, man.
What do you want it to be?
Jimmy Stewart, what was that movie he was in? Oh, that's a great old classic.
Oh, what is that movie called?
Wonderful Life.
Yeah, It's Wonderful Life, yeah.
That is the best movie.
Yeah. They should, they should.
It's a good lesson for us.
And I know we're also gonna be having Stationery Parade of Life, which is similar to what, what Rippon is, uh, working on, and so those seem to be the things that are being formulated, uh, officially from that standpoint. Again, I'm all gonna point out also, hey, listen, any service organization, any group can also do an activity, uh, during Christmas time, but, um, yeah, the, I think the more that we can do to bring the community together, uh, we, you know, we need to do it, um, Christmas tree's gonna be up too, towards the very end of November, so, I'll talk to you about that. Uh, so, at any rate, oh, one last thing, uh, I'd like to do, remember earlier, last year, going into this year, we had monthly meetings with the school district, they're pretty fruitful. Uh, I know that you guys would agree, the school board would agree, PD would agree, and I'd like to go and reach out to, um, uh, Superintendent Acosta, to see if we can maybe start that back up again in some capacity.
Okay.
So, anyway, I've already reached in there, unless anybody has any major objections, there we go. So, at any rate, go out, vote, whatever's gonna happen, we're all gonna be live the next day, we all still go to work, hug your kids, okay, it's, alright, we're all gonna be okay. Um, at this point, I am going to take us into closed session.
Yes.
Okay, and...
So, so this go-to meeting will actually end, but if anybody wants to, um, log back in, once that meeting comes live, they'll, they'll come right back into the open meeting, so.
Okay.
But we will be leaving this meeting to go to, uh, a new meeting.
Okay, very good.
Okay.